To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation.
Good evening. Called to order in Saroval, two thousand, April twenty, April second, two thousand twenty-five. Beth, has this meeting been advertised in accordance with the Open Meeting Act?
Yes, Chairman, it has.
Can we have a roll call?
Sure. Mr. Candell.
Here.
Ms. Larmen, Mr. Muller, Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Ms. Sataka.
Yeah.
Mr. Volosin, Mr. Williams, Councilman Zabrowski.
Here.
Chairman Tai. We have a, we have a quorum. Oh, and we'll put on the record that Danny is here. Uh, Mr. Volosin.
Memorialization of resolutions, we don't have any. Can I have a motion to accept the March second minutes? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Communication agenda?
This evening, we, uh, the board secretary received a letter dated three eighteen, twenty twenty-five from the Law Office of McNerney and Nance regarding Main Street One LLC, Main Street Two LLC, Block Two Forty-nine, Lot One, Block Two Fifty, Lot One, Block Two Fifty-one, Lot One, Extension of a Preliminary and Final Major Site Plan Approval.
No action on that?
I'm here on behalf of the, of the developer, if you'd like to hear. I mean, we, the, uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Uh, my firm represents Main Street South One LLC and Main Street South Two LLC, the designated redeveloper of the Fulton's Landing Redevelopment Project. In September, two thousand twenty-two, the board granted preliminary and major, final major site plan approval to the project. Uh, we recently submitted a letter to the board. We're here tonight requesting a two-year extension of the site plan approval. My client is moving forward as quickly as possible with the project, but given the size of the project requires a great deal of extra municipal approvals, including a substantial number of environmental approvals, some of which can't be applied for until we finish with the county. Uh, we, we are moving as quickly as possible with that, but the point is, we don't know exactly how long those processes will take, and so we are asking a, for a two-year extension of the site plan approval.
Yeah. So they're asking for an additional year, two years. Civil extension requests for one year. They're asking for an additional year for the board now anyway, that they think they may need that.
Anyone on the board have any questions of the engineer? Um, of the lawyer? If not? Does anybody want to make a motion to accept that? Do I have a second? Having a second? And we have anybody that opposed? Any questions? If not, we'll take a roll call.
Mr. Candell.
Yes.
Mr. Shaw.
Yes.
Ms. Sataka.
Yes.
Mr. Volosin.
Yeah.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Councilman Zabrowski.
Yes.
Chairman Tai.
Yes.
Thank you.
She sent me an email afterwards, so we can just look everything up. Sir, yes.
You have his contact?
I'm gonna ask for it.
Okay. He'll send it to you. Okay. Site plan and subdivision?
Yes, this evening, we have application BP number twenty-five dash zero-two CPMD Journey Mill Road Urban Renewal LLC Preliminary and Final Site Plan Subdivision, Journey Mill Road, Block Fifty-eight, Lot Nine, and Block Fifty-eight, Lot Two Point Zero One.
Senator Smith, you're up.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, it's always good to be in Saroval. I am the attorney representing CPMD Journey Mill Road Urban Renewal LLC, and it's good to see you again. You may or may not remember that we were back in front of you last year in September, and you were kind enough to give us a preliminary and final site plan at that time. And you, as everyone in this room knows, as time passes, some things change, and we are back to seek from you an amended preliminary and final site plan as well as a subdivision. There are, there, there haven't been variances requested from us, but your planner made a good suggestion that maybe we should seek two from you, and that was in their, in their planning letter, which was very recent. Planner said you might want to consider a one-foot height variance. We're currently at seventy-five. Planner's reasoning is that as the, these things go, sometimes you need that extra foot of, uh, of leeway. And then secondly, the planner also pointed out that even though your redevelopment agreement says that we do not need to ask for what's called a planning variance, it's forty-five D, uh, thirty-five and thirty-six, and what it talks about is access to a lot. So, and the planner reported as well that, uh, you know, quite frankly, it's irrelevant as long as there's access from fire and ambulance, which there is absolutely access, but we're thinking you should be cautious. And while it's true, your redevelopment agreement says it shouldn't apply to this development, why not ask? All right, just cover our bases in case somebody, somewhere, sometime in the future says, did you get that variance? Even though the redevelopment document does not, does not require it, says it's exempt from it. So those were, uh, we're gonna ask for those two variances, uh, and they are properly noticed because in our notice, we said, in any variances, which in the opinion of the board may be needed. So we're taking the planner's report as a statement that maybe this is something you should look at. We're also seeking, uh, three waivers, one of which is related to the intensity of lighting, foot candles, the second one of which is concerning the height of our, uh, light poles, and then a third one, a discussion of maximum number of monument signs, and we're specifically asking a waiver for two. So with that being said, it's my intention to call two witnesses, our licensed professional engineer, Mr. Dan Bush, who is not only a PE but a planner as well, a PP, and secondly, Kevin Savage, who is our traffic expert, just to confirm that this is not gonna add anything more than the original proposal that you, you approved. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask that Dan Bush be called and sworn so that he can give testimony.
No problem with that.
I do. Sorry. Sure, Dan Bush, B U S C H. I'm a licensed professional planner and, uh, professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I've had the pleasure of testifying before this board on numerous occasions as both an engineer and a planner.
You want to go and accept his credentials?
Make a motion to accept the credential.
I have a second.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Third, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So, Mr. Bush, um, I'm hoping you have the old exhibit and maybe the new exhibit.
Yes, I do.
Good.
A series of old exhibits for that matter.
Yep. So, uh, what it would be great, as in any site plan application, describe the area that, surrounding our property and our property, describe our project, and particularly talk about what's different about the amended preliminary and final as opposed to the prior approval.
Sure. So what I have up here on the board is, uh, what was Exhibit A one at the prior hearing? It's just an aerial exhibit of the existing site. Just very briefly, as I know most of the members of the board are familiar with this, this is Red Oak Lane, uh, which is on the east side, site fronts on Journey Mill Road, contains about forty-six acres and is the former landfill number three, um, site. Most of the site is in a, is in a flood plain, uh, with the exception of the elevated portion of the landfill and the wooded areas in the front and then on the north side are both encumbered by, um, wetlands. Unless there's question on the existing site, I'd like to move on to the old plan and show you what we're proposing.
Everybody good?
We're good.
Thank you. Okay, so this is Exhibit A two from the September, um, hearing. So this shows the fifty, excuse me, two hundred and fifty-seven thousand square foot building, um, we'll call it, it was Building One in the front, and then we have the ninety-nine thousand five hundred and twenty square foot building, um, at the back, um, you know, with the access ingress on the north side, egress on the south side for the trucks, and then for passenger vehicles, um, you know, a two-way access point directly at, uh, Red Oak Lane. So the plan before you this evening is for Building One only. It is the exact same building in the exact same location. There's some small differences inside the building, uh, which, uh, relate to some additional dock office, things of that nature. The, and there's some additional trailer storage at the rear. The yellow line, which you see on the exhibit, is the, the post-subdivision line, which generally follows, if you look at the, at A two from the prior hearing, it generally follows the phase one, phase two line, which was, are the prior approval.
Deanne, just for the record, that the building that we have on, uh, the, the exhibit for tonight is a spec smaller than the one we got, right, approved first time around, right?
It, it only relates to ex, interior components of the building. So the mezzanine, the law office is a little bit different than what was on the prior, but the footprint is still two hundred and fifty thousand square feet, just as it was before.
But the actual square footage that we're, is two fifty-five, all right, and change?
Correct, two fifty-five, four sixty-six.
Right, which is a smidge smaller than the first time around. All right, the obvious question, board's looking at the picture and say, I can tell the difference between these pictures, the other building's not there. Why is the other building not there?
So we filed our application with NJDEP in June of two thousand twenty-three, and that's two thousand twenty-three is in almost two years ago. At that time, um, the, they were reviewing, they stopped reviewing the land use aspect of the application due to the landfill. They subsequently picked it back up last fall after we received our approval from this board. They identified that at this time, land use, the part where we need to get our wetlands permits, our flood hazard permits from, could not at that time approve the rear building. So in order for us to move forward with the front building, we had to remove the back building off the plan, and then we can go back at a later date to deal with the phase two portion of the site.
Right, and we're not, we're not giving up hope on phase.
That's correct.
So, um, the reduction is one building. The, the, the second building is off. We'll see you at a later date, hopefully with a proposal for that, once the DEP gets its act together. Why do I want the subdivision?
The applicant is gonna be purchasing the front lot to build Building One.
Okay. And from the point of view of financing the project, it becomes so much smarter.
Correct.
And if you, I don't know how many times you've read the redevelopment plan, but it's specifically mentioned on numerous occasions that it's understood that there'll probably be a technical subdivision or a financial subdivision, so we're literally following the directives of the redevelopment plan.
The redevelopment of plan, when it was amended in two thousand twenty-four last year, um, actually specifically wrote into the redevelopment plan to do the subdivision, and the language which speaks to not needing a C variance for the real, excuse me, the rear lot fronting on a, on a public street. It doesn't ex, exalt us from having to comply with the municipal land use section, which simply says, in order to approve this lot in the rear that doesn't front on a public street, you have to provide adequate access for emergency vehicles. We're gonna provide access easements on both the north side and the south side for not only access but also utilities. Obviously, you'd have to get utilities to the rear of the site, and as the plan is set up, we've stubbed out utilities all the way to the back roughly adjacent to the subdivision line.
Right, and this is a coal storage facility still.
That's correct.
Okay.
No, no change there.
All right, Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate for Mr. Bush to start addressing the reports?
I would appreciate that. Let me see if anybody has any questions first. Anybody have any questions of the subdivision right now? I wanna go over the reports, that's fine.
All right, uh, Mr. Bush?
Can I, can I cover just two, just two quick things? The, the one, the one thing is with respect to Sarah, Sarah has, um, previously determined that the plan is in conformance with the redevelopment plan, and they have reaffirmed that. I've, I've got communication from the Sarah's engineer confirming that the plan is still in conformance with the redevelopment plan. I just want to get that on the record. And just a couple clarifications on, um, design waivers. Um, there, we had a couple design waivers previously. Sorry. And I just wanna just get them on the record again. So previously, you had a design waiver for slopes greater than three to one, and that's in the same situation as we had previously, basically on the edges, we have retaining walls, and we need a little bit steeper slope to be able to get the grade, um, down to tie into existing without touching the wetlands. This center driveway, you may recall, um, that needs a design waiver for it to be twenty-four feet. We're keeping it narrow at the twenty-four feet, or thirty would be required, because it's only for passenger vehicles, so we don't want to entice a truck to utilize this center driveway. We want them using the north and south driveways. And the other, um, uh, which is a new design waiver, is since we last, um, appeared before the board in September, we have come back, or the county's request, um, and added sidewalk on the west side of Journey Mill Road. There are, um, existing streetlights on Journey Mill Road. However, they don't, they would not meet the borough standard of one-foot candle along all that sidewalk, and that does trigger a design waiver. Everything within the site does comply with the ordinance requirements. It's just that piece on Journey Mill. And I think that's it for, yeah, for the waivers.
Okay, so I draw your attention to, uh, report dated March the twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five from Morgan Municipal Engineering Services. Are you familiar with that memorandum?
I am.
Okay. And as a generic statement, ninety-five percent of everything that's in there is absolutely acceptable to us, but we need a couple of clarifications, and also, there was a request for some testimony, so we're gonna try and cover those bases. All right, uh, direct everybody's attention to page three of twelve of that memo. All right, uh, you, you have a list of the, 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 uh, design waivers that we're requesting, and I think you just justified all of them, but double checking, is there anything you need to further?
That, that's correct. I think the, the, um, the one area of clarification is related to the monument signs. The board previously approved two monument signs. We believe the two monument size, signs as proposed are still consistent with the redevelopment plan, and that that does not require a variance. The.
But we are requesting a continuation of the waiver.
Correct, correct. If you look at the, if you look at the general ordinance, the general ordinance would say that you can only have one freestanding sign in this, in this zone, in the SED zone, but if you read the redevelopment plan, it, I certainly would argue that provides for the opportunity to provide for two monument signs at the same, uh, twenty-five-foot setback as previously proposed.
So to summarize your waiver testimony, you're requesting a re-granting of the waivers that were provided the first time around?
That's correct.
And then you're requesting the, the design waivers that are listed in this report?
That's not entirely the case because, for, for example, the, the light fixture height, um, there was a change to the redevelopment plan last year that where previously it was capped at twenty-five feet, and for that matter, for most of the borough would be capped at twenty-five feet. The redevelopment plan was amended to allow for thirty-five feet, and that only applies, well, it's only required in the rear of the site because we have such a large area to span, span to cover and adequately illuminate the loading area. So that's why the, that, that, the ordinance was in fact changed.
But we are requesting the waiver, or, or saying we don't need a waiver?
We, we do not need the waiver.
Okay. Then, uh, fair statement, we're not necessarily requesting number two.
That's correct.
Okay.
Number one, yes. Number two, no. And number three is the, is the signage stuff we just, we just discussed.
Good. All right, take a look at the bottom of the page, engineering comments will be, there's a request for testimony in A, B, and C, but I think you may have provided it except for maybe C. You've already provided test, uh, testimony on previous approvals, and the testimony on existing and proposed easements, and then if you would, uh, address number C, where are we with the rest of approvals?
So as I indicated, we have a pending application with NJDEP. We submitted, um, I believe it was February seventh, we resubmitted, um, back to NJDEP with the plan as you see before you this evening, and we are awaiting comments and feedback from DEP to get that approval. The other, the other applications will, will be pending the approval of the, of the board, a hopeful approval of the board.
All right. And, um, item E is, is just a, an informational comment, uh, they want, the planner says, don't make sure you look at the aesthetics, and is there a change in the architecture?
There, there is not, and when we get to the end, I'll, I'll show you two, identical exhibit showing the prior exhibit and the new exhibit, and they're identical.
Right.
From an aesthetic standpoint.
I think an F, we're in the same boat. We have not signed a tenant at this point, so in the first application, we couldn't give you the hours of operation, numbers of employees.
But we, we did, we, we did, it is, it is twenty-four hours, there's no, there's no change, there's no change to that.
Good. All right, I direct everybody's attention to page four.
So on the, on the parking, there is one minor change we need to, um, make to the plan. So, um, the, there's an additional thousand square feet of office of the dock office, thousand thirty-five to be precise, which adds a requirement to add four additional parking stalls. We have a location, as you come in, at the front access point that we can fit four additional parking spaces. So that would bring us to a total of, uh, ninety-two parking spaces. One of the things the board did in the original approval, and we discussed with the board, was giving us the flexibility, depending on the ultimate tenant, to bank some of the parking. We believe ultimately, we do not need ninety-two passenger parking spaces for the site. And what we had done last time was, subject to the review and approval of the board's engineer, we would reduce and bank some of that parking, so we would ask the board to grant that relief this time as well.
And the reason for the additional four spaces, if you take it, comment one A, one A, it says the office use is seventy-seven oh five square feet, the office space is now projected to be.
Eighty-seven forty.
And that's what results in the four new spaces.
Yep, and that doesn't change.
So in one breath, you're, you're giving us four spots, and maybe you're asking us that you might want to space, uh, bank some parking?
Correct. We, we still have to design the stormwater system, we actually have to rate for that, and it's just a matter of, when we get a tenant, if we don't need ninety-two spaces, which is what we envisioned the case to be, we would like the latitude to be able to bank them and leave them green.
That's, that was my next question. You're not gonna park trailers there?
Correct, Mr. Chairman. Correct.
Okay, going down the page, um, the next item, all the items that are in between, we agree, we will provide or we agree. First place where we have any, uh, something new perhaps is two B. It appears that at several locations, the truck circulation mode for the five firetruck requirements, turn wheels from stop or turn-on spot, truck circulation should be revised to exclude that option.
That's all okay.
And we're, we agree to that, correct?
Yep.
Okay, the, um, next one is C.
Yeah, this refers to, I had a chance to talk to Mr. Wilder, this refers to the, the center driveway, um, and that was the discussion of regarding it, leaving it at the twenty-four feet versus the thirty feet to, again, reduce the ability for a truck or desire for a truck to try to make that entrance there. So, um, we're gonna leave it the way it is, and I had a chance to discuss that with Mr. Wilder, and he can affirm that.
And I understand the main reason for that is this is egress only, it's one direction?
The, the southern driveway is egress only, the middle driveway is the one that has both ingress and egress only for passenger cars.
All right, and this was discussed with the township engineer, and he's okay with it?
With the board's engineer, yes.
With the board's engineer?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item D, we agree. Make sure the fire official's happy.
And there was a, the, when you get to the top of page five E, the, the question is, there's a rectangular box at the top of the, on the north end of the loading dock area, and just for, just the, the clarification of the request is to clarify that is in fact a trash compactor, and that's how trash will be managed for the site, so that's my testimony.
That's answering the question.
Yes, yes, sir.
Take a look at three A signs. Uh, we note the applicant proposes two freestanding monument signs in the front of the property on Journey Mill Road and are within the twenty, required twenty-five-foot setback from the eastern property line.
They're right on the, they're right on the twenty-five-foot setback, so they, they are at, so they meet the twenty-five-foot setback.
So you're saying we meet the requirement?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. All right, let's take a look at the tree preservation plan down the bottom. You have one, nineteen eighty-five remainder of trees to be provided.
Let me just explain to the, to the board what we're... So there's a change from the plans that are before you. We'd originally, on the plans that are before you, shown extensive landscaping along the west side of the development, adjacent to the trailer storage. We kind of re-looked at that, and looking at the opportunity to build on phase two in the future, it doesn't make any sense to plant that, plant trees and shrubbery along that line that would really inhibit the ability to build phase two at a later date. So what we propose to do is, and as you can see on the exhibit, is take that landscaping off. We would pay the, the tree replacement fee to the borough, and it doesn't change or create any variance conditions or waiver conditions. It just does make it more feasible to build on phase two in a later date.
And it, just in terms of orientation, people who are passing by the, uh, coal storage facility, are they even gonna be able to see the rear of the property?
Nope, they wouldn't be able to see it. In fact, the, the landfill actually still continues to go up, so even if you were out here and on South River, you're not gonna, you wouldn't see it. Yeah. Yes, sir.
Okay, bottom of the page, five A, they went a little more on the landscaping side of it, and we're agreeing to provide it, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Turning to page six of twelve. Testimonies shall be provided to confirm the proposed poles and light fixtures are aesthetically compatible with the surrounding environment.
They're exactly the same, it was what was previously proposed, with the exception of the, as I indicated, the thirty-five-foot holes at the, at the rear that provide adequate lighting for the loading area.
When we put those thirty-five-foot poles in, you're, you're not gonna be able to see that light from Journey Mill Road, right?
That's correct, because it's all.
All on the back.
Mr. Chairman, it's all behind, the twenty-five footers are all in the front.
Nothing there but the landfill and the river.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
All right, take a look at B, which refers to that design waiver on the height of the pole, which for the record, we no longer believe is necessary.
That is, that is correct.
So we're not requesting six, six B.
Yep. C is the design waiver for the foot candle of lighting on Journey, on the Journey Mill only sidewalk.
And that's, we've already requested and testified to it, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
I've.
Number seven, we agree, correct?
D is just a statement, yes.
Right. And looking at stormwater management, uh, it says, we note the applicant has submitted a geotechnical investigation report that details the methods used and results found as noted in the stormwater. As noted in the stormwater management, and that's just for the information of the board. But in the next two, two and three, there's specific requests. And what's our response to those specific requests?
So, just to kind of go back to what I said in the beginning is, the project is actually grandfathered under the rules prior to July of twenty twenty three. Which means that we only have to provide green infrastructure. So that's why you see bio retention basins. We don't have to route what is the so-called future storm events. So the way it's designed as is, meets those, meets those standards. And that's within common or on page seven. So that's, I just need to clarify that we are grandfathered. That's why we don't have to comply with number four. And the rest of the comments on page seven are all fine. We will comply.
All right. Page, page seven, as you just said, will comply with all items, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And going to the top of page eight, four, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen will all comply. All of section D.
Stormwater quality.
We will comply. Section E is just affirming that we don't need to meet groundwater recharge because this is a, this is a landfill remediation site.
Right.
Letter F, we will comply. Letter G, um, one is just asking for testimony that this has, uh, the grading has no impact on adjoining properties. And that's a, that's a yes. It does not have any impact on adjoining properties. And then two.
Is it will comply?
Is will comply.
All right. Flipping to page ten of twelve. At, uh, first.
Yeah. So everything through twelve is a will comply. Thirteen is just a comment with respect to one of our stormwater outfalls on the south.
Which page are you on?
I'm on page nine, comment thirteen. Which speaks to the outfall located at the edge of the, uh, MCUA easement. And it's actually in a location where there's an existing discharge from the, the contractor yard. This is the edge of the property that's currently developed out there. We, we need to maintain that existing location. I had a chance to speak to Mr. Wilder and his concern is to ensure that MCUA approves that and provided MCUA approves that, which they've raised no objection to. They've seen these plans. So we propose to just leave it in that location.
The rest, the rest of nine, page nine, we agree to do everything.
Correct.
All right. Page ten. Top half of page ten, we agree to all of the comments. However, at twenty five, it says testimony should be provided.
Correct.
Regarding the number of exterior doors proposed along, uh, with how many of these doors will be handicapped accessible. The applicant shall confirm that the subdivision of the doors will be accessible in accordance with the ADA.
So I, I, first of all, we have accessible entrances for the office, which is the public space. I did have an opportunity to, um, reach out to the architect to get more information. So all the, by definition, all the entrances are accessible. They don't all need to be handicap accessible. So that's per the, per the building code.
You meet the criteria.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And we agree with every, the rest of the page as well. There is a comment under eleven A three, which says, we recommend that the applicant strongly consider implementing solar panels of, on the roof of the proposed building. Number one, the law in New Jersey now, instead of any new buildings, the building has to be pre-wired for forty percent of the roof. So that it can take solar. But, uh, you have a couple of other forces going on here. You have rate increases. Electricity rate increases are going to start July first, and this is a cold storage facility. So we, we think the tenant is going to be considering this and wanting it. But at the end of the day, we have to do what the tenant wants.
That's correct. So it's designed to, to handle solar panels should the tenant want to do that. And we do believe that they will want to do that, as Mr. Smith just described.
Ninety percent of the work. All I have to do is put the panels up.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
So flipping to page eleven. The, uh, at the top of the page, again, the number two and three, we, we will comply. Number four, planting should be provided around the outdoor mechanical equipment to screen from view. Dan, if you'd respond to that?
Yeah. So the mechanical equipment is located in the northwest corner behind the building. We do not want to plant landscaping around that mechanical equipment. We, we want to leave it open to the air. So we do not propose any plantings in that area. So we prefer, our request is to not plant around the mechanical equipment. And it's not visible from the public. As you can see, it's all the way in the back behind the building.
And is there any downside to putting plants around mechanical equipment?
I mean, they can have leaf debris, you can have issues with ventilation, things of that nature.
Right. And since there's no aesthetic impact, this is a reasonable request.
That, that's correct.
Okay. So that's the only point where we're disagreeing so far. We're, we're at ninety nine point nine percent. So take a look at number five. Plantings are proposed over the top of two, uh, over the top of the underground stormwater basin in several locations. While plant, the plantings proposed and generally small plantings or are generally small plantings. We recommend that those plantings, uh, that they be shifted. So they do not, uh, they are not in conflict with the underground stormwater system. Would you respond to that?
Yes. It's just for some shrubs. There's no trees that are over the, over the underground basins. It's just some shrubs in these little islands that are over the basin. We want to, we want to continue to landscape them and, and leave them with, with bushes. Noting that the underground basin is actually significantly deep. It's about five feet of cover. So there's plenty of soil for those plants to, to thrive. And we do have, um, uh, cleaning ports. It means the access to be able to clean the underground basin as well. So our request is to leave that, the plant as, as proposed.
So that's the second item we're resisting. With regard to the lighting, we're okay with that comment? Item C?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go to D, site layout. We note that the applicant proposes site distances along Journey Mill Road. As per ASHTO guidelines, applicant provide testimony confirming the site triangles proposed to comply with county requirements.
Yes, the, 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 the application is subject to review and approval of the county. Not that we've got full county approval at this point, but they've raised no concerns. And just speaking to when this project was approved back in twenty sixteen, a similar project when it was a power plant. We had basically driveways in almost identical locations and they approved them in those locations with those site triangles.
So you're not expecting the county to disagree?
Correct. And ASHTO is the, the, the national standard that would be utilized.
Number two, applicants provide information regarding relative to trash collection and pickup.
And it'll be by a private corridor from that tra, um, trash compactor area previously identified.
Okay. And then we're fine with, uh, E, F.
Yeah, I think the next one is just G one. And that, where that's the request to record the, the subdivision by plat and we, we agree with that.
Right. Number two is fine. Going to the last page, conditions of approval. We're, we're good with everything, but I do think a note should be added to item five. On, uh, outside agencies, and you say as applicable. I'd use the word maybe if required. All right. Um, there, there may be some approvals that are not needed. For example, the Freehold Soil Conservation District Borough Cerval has its own.
That's correct.
Conservation district, so.
That's a Borough Cerval approval.
Yep, 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 yep. And we've, we have no idea whether EPA is requiring any approvals, but we're certainly going to kick those tires. And posting all vines, number six, we have no problem with that. So in total, members, there were only two items that we're resisting. The rest of it, we, we agreed to. Any questions on the engineer's report?
Anybody have any questions of the engineer or the attorney?
So we got one more report.
Excuse me?
We have one more report.
Okay.
And Dan is going to respond to that one as well. The second report is from Acuity Consulting Services. Date at March the twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty five. Dan, are you familiar with that report?
Yes.
Okay, so. And again, we don't really disagree with very much. I would like to point the board's attention to page three, eleven point six point one, which does point out that, um, the, uh, technical subdivision is provided for in the redevelopment plan. And that's a justification for the subdivision. Take a look at page four. The top of page four. The planner mentions the planning appearance, NJSA forty colon fifty five D dash thirty five and also section thirty six. Saying that it's in the redevelopment plan first, that it has no application. And then secondly, we have no issues. We, the planner, have no issues as long as there's access for emergency vehicles. That being said, and in the, in, all we're supposed to be concerned, I don't know if you knew that, but we're all supposed to be conservative. So we're requesting that variance, the, the planning variance, because planner did bring it up. And if the planner brought it up, that's enough for me to say, you know what, somebody else may have, have agenda about that. So we'd like the forty fifty five D dash thirty five variance, uh, from the board, if you would please consider that. And then, um, we still have the, I guess it's still to come, that seventy five, seventy six feet. That's the next page. All right. Uh, there's a, the one other comment, the second paragraph on page four. While proposal I being not have frontage on an approved right of way, however, a series of easements will be necessary to allow the two lots to function seamlessly as it relates to cross-axis utility maintenance and shared. And I thought you already made a comment on that.
That's cor, that's correct. Yeah.
Will provide any.
Will provide the access easements necessary to prefer utilities access stormwater.
And if everybody turned to page five.
Yeah, I think we get down to section three on the comments.
Yeah. Three I was Sarah's approval. We talked about that.
I think three, two, I, double I is.
Done a side by side comparison. And you've also discussed the plot plan for the subdivision. And the plan, uh, their plan should set a separate plat that shows the subdivision line easements and outbound dimensions. And we're going to provide.
Which will be required in order to record the subdivision by plat. So yes, of course.
Okay. I direct your attention to the last page, which is page six.
Just, just one thing on, on three, uh, seven, which is that landscape area. There was a question about the landscape area between lot A and B, and we are removing that. So that, obviously that comment goes away.
Last page, uh, PI X. Given the volume of the building coupled with various substandard, subsurface conditions. It is recommended that the applicant consider requesting a one foot high variance or other similar flexibility for relief as it pertains to the construction of the seventy five foot building. This would be a de minimis exception and would allow for some flexibility in grading around the building's perimeter. So for the record, we are requesting, I, we think the planner suggestion is a great idea. We're crest, requesting a one foot more height variance to seventy six feet. Okay. Building design. The applicant should describe any significant differences in building design and operations versus the building included in the existing approval. That's not going to work.
So the exhibit on the, on your right is A three from the September approval. And the exhibit on the left is dated March third, twenty twenty five. They're identical. That's the front facade of the building. So it's, there's no changes. So that's just to, quite frankly, illustrate that there are no changes.
Okay. I'd like to save XI eleven for our traffic guy. He's going to come up for thirty seconds, but that's really for the traffic expert, Mr. Savage. And then, uh, XII. The applicant should provide testimony regarding pedestrian circulation improvements. Depending on the testimony provided, it may be necessary for the applicant to work with the board's professionals to reasonably and reasonably enhance site pedestrian elements as a condition of approval.
Yeah, there's one piece of sidewalk that does need to be added to the plan to specifically address that comment. So now we have sidewalk on Journey Mill Road. We have sidewalk within the site connecting our parking lot to our entrance here in the southwest corner. What is currently not on the plan is a piece of sidewalk to connect the Journey Mill Road sidewalk to our site sidewalk. So we need to add that piece of sidewalk. And that's, I believe, the reference to the comment. And we agree to do that.
Work with the engineer. The engineer is happy with it. Okay, that's, I think that's, um, all the comments or the two reports. Is there anything else you want to add?
No, that's it.
Mr. Chairman, uh, Dan Bush is available for questions from the board.
Anybody have any questions of the planner or the engineer? You going to bring up the traffic guy?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Savage. Let's get you sworn, right?
I do.
Uh, Mr. Savage, were you ever, uh, accepted by this board as a traffic expert?
I have not.
Give us the short version of your credentials.
Sure. I'm employed as a principal at Dynamic Traffic. I'm a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey and six other states. And I've testified before boards throughout the state of New Jersey. Kevin. Last name Savage, S A V A G E.
Anybody want to accept his credentials?
Make a motion to accept credentials.
All favor. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay. Mr. Savage, uh, I'm, I'm going to, uh, ask you the standard question. You were retained by the applicant here to evaluate traffic aspects of the site?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and your company did that?
Correct.
And what'd you find out?
So, um, in reference to the, the previous application, the proposed access remains exactly the same. There's a proposed ingress only truck driveway at the northern side of the site. A, a full movement passenger car driveway in the central part of the site opposite Red Oak Lane. And there's an egress only driveway on the southern portion of the property. Really just two changes to note, um, in reference to the previous application. The first is with the removal of phase two, removal of about a hundred thousand square feet of, of building. There's a corresponding reduction in, in trip generation and traffic impact. That would be about twenty five percent less than the, the previous application. The second, as the engineer had mentioned, um, there's been further coordination and, and review by the county. In addition to the sidewalk added along Journey Mill Road, the county has also requested that left turn lanes be added into the central and northern site driveways, which are reflected here on the proposed site rendering. So that, that design is, is ongoing and review by the county is ongoing.
So, um, summarizing in your professional opinion, the traffic aspects that were approved in the la, last application will not be substantially less than this application.
That's correct.
All right. So turning your attention to page six of the planner's memo. There is a section XI. The applicant should address whether any of the general operating procedures for the proposed building may change, such as hours of business operation, number of employees on a maximum shift, the type of items stored, delivered and shipped, the frequency of the truck traffic and types of trucks most often onsite. And again, we have not signed a deal with the coal storage facility, so we can't give you actual numbers. But the numbers last time were accepted. I think back based on, um, IT calculations.
Correct. Yeah. The, the previous application based on IT, which is a, um, a national publication that collects, um, trip generation data throughout the country. We anticipated about forty peak hour trips for the site. With this revised application, we anticipate about thirty. So again, that, uh, that, those are peak hour trips. Again, that's, that's a decrease of about twenty five percent. And for reference, NJDOT considers a, a significant increase in traffic, which is a perceptible increase on. which is a perceptible increase on, in traffic on the surrounding roadway network as 100 trips. So we're about 30% of that threshold.
Under the old calculation, which had more conservative numbers?
Uh, so it'd be 40% under the old calculation and 30% under, under ours.
So it's made a current.
Correct, either way, it's, it's significantly less than, you know, that, that threshold sent, set by NJDOT.
Terrific. Mr. Savage, anything else you want to offer?
No, that's all.
Mr. Savage is available to the board for questions.
Anybody have any questions about the planner? Having none?
That concludes our case, Mr. Chairman. And I don't know, I assume you have to open to the public.
We're going to open to, you want to make a closing statement first?
I should wait to see if there's any public first, just to see.
Take a motion to open up to the public? Second? Aye. Anyone from the public like to speak?
30 seconds. Great project. Working through Cervel's boards, commissions, redevelopment for years. The great news is the borough will no longer have responsibility for any legacy environmental impacts. It all ends on my client, who has evaluated the site. You know, he's not going into it unknowingly, but it's a great thing. The borough is going to hopefully get a good slug of cash for the purchase of it. The project is kind of nichey, it has its own niche. Coal storage facilities are different. Okay, so, and I'm, I'm making a bet, you're going to hit the solar on the roof. The price of electricity going up, so it could be the best bargain in New Jersey. And you've had, you've had a client, you've had, my client has worked with the borough for many years to get this just right. And this is a redevelopment project. So you're going to do very well on the tax side too, as the future goes on. But don't think about money. Think about the good jobs that are coming to Cervel with this project. So we hope you'll approve it.
Anybody from the public like to speak? Anyone from the public like to speak? Seeing no one from the public, I'll take a motion to close.
Close.
Second? All in favor? Any opposed, the ayes have it. Gentlemen and ladies, what's your pleasure?
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the application, including the variances and waivers that were requested.
And a second? Of a roll call?
Mr. Kent, Mr. Candell?
Yeah.
Mr. Shaw?
Yes.
Ms. Taka?
Yes.
Mr. Velosin? Mr. Williams? Councilman Zabrowski?
Yes.
Chairman Tai?
For choosing, oh, yes.
Thank you for the user-friendly approach of your board and your town.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, where are we?
Next on the agenda is old business, new business administrative matters. Our next meeting is April 16th.
Taking a nap before, is that Main Street?
Uh, yeah, so, yeah.
This will be the mosque. We had a meeting today, we have everything, or they, they will have everything in, in, by Friday. So we, we meet the deadlines for the 16th. What we're planning on doing is this meeting, Mr. Sacks said he's probably going to take the whole meeting to go over the rest of the stuff that he needs. And we're going to, the first weekend, first meeting in May, we're going to offer to have the public speak on this matter.
Page seven.
Okay? That's where we sit. Anybody else need a motion to adjourn? Oh, we have to open up the public. Need a motion to open up the public? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public like to speak? Anybody from the public like to speak? Hearing none, I'll take a motion to close the public portion. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, need a motion to adjourn? Uh, boy, I got a lot of them. Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you very much for a great meeting.
Have a great night, everybody.
And a nice vacation.
Thank you.